About to start council meeting. Rick gonna let us know.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice is evolved. Thank you.
What's your...
Well, can we get conference in amendment? Is that what I'm gonna be...
No.
Where is, uh...
I didn't get it.
All set?
I didn't get it, Poppy.
You all set? Sit down. Ready?
Yeah.
Tenet? Councilor Cooper?
Here.
Councilor Garcia?
Which one?
Council Robertson?
Here.
Councilor Taylor?
Here.
Tenary Garcia?
She's not here.
Okay, sorry. Council Lopez? Council Vega Maldonado?
Here.
Councilor Janada? Councilor Brown?
Present.
Councilor Vido?
Present.
Council De Jesus?
Present.
And Council Judy Garcia?
Present.
Okay, so we have ten present. Nine present? Is that the hospital?
Who's there?
Annual one to hospital?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. We have a morbiems and celebratory resolutions, Mr. Chairman. First resolution introduced by Councilor Robinson. Celebrating Juneteenth. Whereas news of the end of slavery did not reach the frontier areas of the United States, in particular the state of Texas and the other southwestern states until months after the conclusion of the Civil War, more than two and a half years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three. And whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and that enslaved were free. And whereas Juneteenth became a holiday within southwestern states commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, the word Juneteenth resulted from the words June nineteenth merged together in speech. And whereas this day is an opportunity for people to celebrate freedom and equal rights in the United States, these celebrations range from religious events, rodeos, barbecues, cookouts, neighborhoods, block parties, et cetera. Whereas on Juneteenth, certain foods became popular and subsequently synonymous at celebrations such as strawberry soda pop. At barbecues, special dishes were prepared such as collard greens, cornbread, and meats including lamb, pork, and beef. Meats were not so easily accessible. Whereas the Juneteenth flag was created by Ben Hays, founder of National Juneteenth Celebration Foundation, in nineteen ninety-seven and later revised in two thousand to what we know now, we know now. The star represents Texas and the starburst represents all fifty states. The arc represents a new horizon and finally the colors represent the American flag, a reminder that slaves were and are Americans. And whereas Juneteenth is celebrated all over the world, including but not limited to Ghana, Honduras, Japan, Taiwan, Trinidad, and Tobago. And whereas the Chelsea Black community will raise the Juneteenth flag for the second year in a row in Chelsea on Monday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, in honor of Juneteenth. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Chelsea and Chelsea City Council recognizes June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, as Juneteenth and continuing to support the nationwide celebration of Juneteenth Independence Day throughout the United States of America.
What's the wish of the council?
Adoption unanimously under suspension. There are no objections and just briefly, there will be a program...
So adopted. Would you like to speak?
Yeah. Just briefly, there will be a program on Monday, June twentieth, at Washington Park for anybody to stop by and enjoy the festivities by the Chelsea Black community.
Anyone else like to speak? Councilor Garcia, Judith?
President, I briefly want to take a moment to acknowledge the members of the CBC who are here today. Thank you so much for the work that you do year round by keeping us educated, by creating forums for us to learn and have real open dialogue of these conversations. But above all, thank you for honestly, really promoting this event that I know you'll be having soon, Juneteenth. So thank you so much for everything you do. It does not go unseen and thank you for teaching the youth of the importance of these conversations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other council like to speak? Okay. No other speakers. Next order, please, Ms. ... I'm sorry. Councilor Devoile?
Um, I really, I don't want to say too much because I tend to say too much. I just want to acknowledge the Chelsea Black community. I think it's amazing. The Black community has been celebrating Juneteenth for centuries, but it's funny that, it's funny that it's become a national holiday and now you see people kind of, you know, wanting to celebrate and wearing funky little colors and feeling they're a part of the movement. And I think that's great. I think it's beautiful, but it has to be more than that. We have to remember that we're still consistently fighting systemic inequities and we can celebrate, but we also have to get to work, June twentieth, to make sure that we get, we continue fighting the good fight that we continue to fight and that Joan Cromwell and her members continue to keep on pushing. So just want to shout out the community and say thank you for everything that you do.
If there's no objections, I'd like to use my privilege to speak from the chair. Thank you, colleagues. I want to congratulate everyone. Congratulate Robinson, Council Robinson, for bringing this resolution forth before the committee today for the expectations of a great event. Last year was a wonderful event. We hope that the weather is just as good and fair as it was last year and hopefully we'll get some of that same type of food and that music and the drum beats. And it's great to see that not only have we found out more about Juneteenth, but we've also engaged in and participated in it. So I look forward to that on the twentieth and again, thank you again, Council Robinson. Would you like to present the resolution? Just one moment. We'll present the resolution to the committee. Want me to go on?
Yep. I want to ask a question first. Yeah, I got it.
The next resolution introduced by Councilor Vido, celebrating June as Pride Month. Whereas individuals, lesbians, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer referred in this resolution as LGBTQ include individuals from all states and the District of Columbia and all faiths, races, national origins, socioeconomic statuses, education levels, and political beliefs. And whereas LGBTQ people in the United States have made and continue to make vital contributions to the United States and to the world in every aspect. And whereas LGBTQ people in the United States serve and have served in the United States Army, Coast Guard, Navy, Air Force, and Marines honorably and with distinction and bravery. Whereas LGBTQ people in the United States have fought for equal treatment, dignity, and respect and have achieved significant milestones ensuring the future generations of LGBTQ people in the United States will enjoy a more equal and just society. And whereas despite being marginalized throughout the history of the United States, LGBTQ people in the United States continue to celebrate their identities, love, and contributions to the United States in various expressions of pride. Whereas the Chelsea LGBTQ Coalition will raise the Pride Flag for the seventh year in a row in Chelsea on Friday, June third, in honor of LGBTQ Pride Month. Now therefore be resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council officially recognize June as LGBTQ Pride Month and celebrate and support the LGBTQ community in Chelsea and beyond.
What's the wish of the council?
Move to adopt unanimously under suspension. I'd like to speak on it.
So you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is just the resolution acknowledging June as being Pride Month. On Friday, the Chelsea, I can't remember what they call, the LGBTQ Coalition. Yeah, they did their annual flag raising down at Chelsea Square. It's something they've been doing for the past seven years. And again, it's really cool when we fly the rainbow flag and whatnot, but we have to understand that there are real struggles there for people that continue to fight for equal rights, for people that don't feel comfortable coming out. And talk about intersection, Black trans women continue to die at alarming rates. And so we have to continue to keep these conversations going. So I just wanted to make sure that we're acknowledging our community, our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgendered, people who are still questioning whoever, however you identify, making sure that we are celebrating them and knowing that they're a part of this community and that we are grateful for their contributions. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, so for a move.
Go back to the resolution.
Like the, is the resolution all set? All right, we'd like to take one, two minutes for the committee to come up. Council Robinson would ask the council members if you'd like to join in with the committee to take a photo?
The Juneteenth.
And the resolution for the June tenth. Thank you. Okay, council members, we're back in session.
We have one more resolution introduced by Judith Garcia, counselor, celebrating in contributions of Eduardo Rodriguez Bivin and the Chelsea Running Club. Whereas running is a mind and spirit sport that can be transformational from Chelsea residents seeking to improve fitness goals, but also serves as coping mechanisms for those who suffer of depression, addiction, anxiety, and other mental health challenges. Whereas in April, twenty twenty-two, Eduardo Rodriguez Bivin aspired to share his love for the sport by developing a cultural, a culture of running in Chelsea by facilitating Chelsea's Running Club under Chelsea's recreational department. Whereas this free program has managed to gather a, over a dozen Chelsea residents of all running levels, as young as fifteen and older, to promote health and wellness in Chelsea. They have encouraged to run or walk in their own, at their own pace, empowering the community to move. Whereas Eduardo has exemplified what it means to give back to a community during dire times. Eduardo was born in Puebla, Mexico, and moved in the United States in twenty-ten in the hopes of reaching the American dream. He settled in Chelsea seven years ago. Whereas during the pandemic, Eduardo was one of the countless residents who struggled with food insecurity and joblessness. Despite all this, he pulled his sleeves and stepped up to help other volunteer in countless hours at the Celebration Army at La Colaborativa. Whereas it was the experience that motivated Eduardo to promote hope, health, and wellness through, through running. Today, the dream of creating a running club is a reality and a testimony of how powerful our minds and bodies can be if we choose to take the first step. Now therefore be resolved that the Chelsea City Council recognizes Eduardo Rodriguez and the Chelsea Running Club for their contributions to Chelsea's health and wellness.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension if there are no objections and I wish to speak on it.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in life, I like to say there are people who can complain about the challenges and then there are those who see a challenge but also see an opportunity to create something better. And I think Eduardo and his running club that is here today is exactly an example of that. During the pandemic, someone had a vision of coping with, with health and bringing hope to the community. And what better way to do it than through something that I love dearly, which is running? Personally, I love running and, and I've seen it and I've used it as a mechanism of, of just resilience, a mechanism to cope with trauma, with stress, with anxiety, with mental challenges. And I saw you, I saw and I continue to see it on your Instagram posts, your Facebook Live. I know that the recreational department also promotes it on their Facebook. There was a vision of a running club and you made that vision a reality, Eduardo. So I want to take the opportunity to honor you, to acknowledge the Running Club members who show up every Wednesday at six P. M. after work, after volunteering, after doing whatever it is that you're doing. You take time for yourselves and that is important. The sort of messaging that you're promoting when you're running our streets, streets that many of us claim, you know, that are probably too dangerous, that are probably not well paved. You're going out there, you're far seeing those obstacles and you're running. And that's bringing you together, that's bringing you together, that's setting a beautiful message for our kids, for our families, and sometimes people who would never think that running could be used as a mechanism, right? So thank you so much for what you do. Thank you so much for, for the health and wellness that you're promoting because I know that you are having an impact in our community in a way that is selfless, in a way that really encourages great behavior here. So thank you so much. I honor you. I invite folks, if you're watching this group, they take anyone, it's absolutely free, all levels. You could be fifteen years old to whatever age. It's never too late to, to start running. It's just about taking that first step, right? So thank you again for what you do. I encourage folks to join the, the running club. I would love to join. I've been out of commission for a few years, but honestly, you know, try to find something to do, what a better outlet than to go out there and run. So it's an honor for me to present this, this resolution, but I'll give the floor to my colleagues who I'm sure may have a few remarks.
Thank you, Council, Councilor Second Garcia.
Two Garcias.
Yeah.
I've had the honor and the privilege to work with Eduardo during the pandemic. And I just want to say, I am so very proud of you. Everything that you've accomplished working with you during the pandemic was truly a highlight. You brightened up everything. And I might join you for running because I need it. I gained a couple pounds, so, and then definitely a coping mechanism. I invite any teenager, anyone who's been stressing about anything to run. It is absolutely amazing. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yep, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay. All right. We're gonna let, we're gonna present you a resolution. We're gonna take a minute to present you a resolution and then you can speak a few minutes. Yeah. So the public can't speak directly to us, but we do have a speaking portion where after this you'll be able to speak, but we're gonna present you with the resolution that's offered by Judith Garcia. If you mind stepping forward, we appreciate that. Okay. At this time, we're now open our public speaking. Anyone would like to speak to the city council tonight? You can please step to the podium. We have a mic set up for you. Please state your name and address and you'll be allowed four minutes to address the city council. So anyone, yes, if you'd like to give an... Anyone here is also entitled and allowed to speak. It's not close to anyone. Thank you. Hello? Excuse me. Counselors, counselors, we have a speaker. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Eduardo Rodriguez. It's an honor for me to be here. Thank you for, so much. Want to thank you, Yuri. Thank you for your invitation. I want to also thank you, Tom Ambrosino, for, to be manager. Before anything, I want to thank B. Crabata, Beatrice. Thank you so much for everything. Beatrice is the, the works for, the works at the Chelsea Recreational and, and you are the reason why you make everything possible and I want to thank you for everything. We've been working together and we're making this possible. So the Chelsea Running Club, our main mission is to develop a culture of running in Chelsea, to promote health and wellness in the community. We believe that running can have a positive impact in one's health and it can change your life. So that is our mission, to get the community moving. So we believe in the benefits of running. I have experienced those benefits myself. I am thirty-five years old. Just four years ago, I decided to go for a run, put my running shoes on, and, and that moment changed my life. Before that, that was two thousand and eighteen. Before that, I didn't exercise, I didn't do anything, and I have so many problems. I was into drugs, alcohol. I was drinking every day, getting drunk, smoking a pack of cigarettes almost every day. I was depressed and so one day, I got out one morning, April, two thousand and eighteen, and I said enough is enough, put my running shoes on, and I went for a run. I probably ran one or two blocks and I went back home. I couldn't run anything more than that. But that, that moment changed my life and make an impact on myself. I continued running for three months and I saw the difference in what happened to me. I was, I lost fifty-two pounds in three months by just running. I was no longer needed to look, I didn't want to drink alcohol anymore, didn't want to smoke, and I was happier at the end of the day. So I believe that running is powerful and I want to share this with the community. And so right now, we see bad news, we hear bad news everywhere. We went through a pandemic, Chelsea was hit hard with, during the pandemic. And I think what, what I, we want to do...
One minute.
The Chelsea Running Club, we want to bring some happiness, some, something positive to the community. Our mission is, I believe that a healthier community is a happier community. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Please speak your name and your address, please, for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Celeste Williams. I live at two twenty-seven Chestnut Street in Chelsea. I'm a longtime resident of Chelsea. I used to be a frequent runner as well, until I broke my leg, so now I fast pace walk. But any kind of exercise is very good for people. I just want to say that. Thank you and thank city councilors.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to talk about Juneteenth, just for a brief second, only because I'm a history buff, right? I studied Pan-Africanism. I am honored in that. And I knew nothing about American Black history until I started searching on my own. I was curious. I wanted to know more about these people than just slavery. I wanted to know, did they ever own anything? Did they ever work? And then the question came up is freedom. What did that mean to those people that were free at the time versus the people that didn't even know, you know, that Lincoln had freed the slaves? And when they were free, where were they going? What were they gonna do? Where was their house? How were they gonna feed their children? And I come back right here today and that struggle is still going on, even through Pan-Africanism, which includes our brown sisters and our Black brothers and sisters throughout the Caribbean, throughout Central America, and Africa. So we're all connected and we're all bonded in one way. And the main opportunity we have here as a community, as our second annual Juneteenth, is to educate, educate, educate. Educate will breed out ignorance. And when that is done, we will learn to embrace each other's culture with tolerance and love and compassion and empathy, all those things that might be missing in our society since we've been so isolated. I thank you for hearing me out today and please join us on June twentieth for our Juneteenth celebration. But we won't only be celebrating, we will be educating.
Thank you.
All right.
I think we're... Hi, my name is Joan Cromwell. I'm president of Chelsea Black Community. I live at thirty-eight Addison Street, lifelong resident. No one wiped the mic in between speakers, but that's okay. I just wanted to say, I'm here with CBC members and basically, this is a PSA for June twentieth, Juneteenth. And Leo said it all with the start of the resolution, but just to know that Juneteenth also called Jubilee Day, Emancipation Day, Freedom Day, and Black Independence Day. And it wasn't that day that we were freed. And I will say we, because it's generational, it's my ancestors. It was many years before, it was two years before, but they never knew. So it was in Galveston, Texas, that the federal troops went in and actually said, hey, enough is enough. These folks are free and they don't even know. So that's why it's celebrated and it, they say Juneteenth because it was the month of June and teenth is the nineteenth day. So we were freed far before that, in the year of eighteen sixty-five. It was prior to that, but they just never knew in Galveston, Texas. So it's been celebrated, it's actually the longest celebrated African-American holiday standing, and it's been celebrated, as Councilor Damali, Damali had said, for many, 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 many years. But now it's a federal holiday, so we're blessed with that. And I just want to say, Juneteenth, my girl ran off, Celeste, but we are absolutely here to say you all are invited. Freedom is, is, freedom is a gem and it's something that we all can reflect on, whether we're Black, White, Brown, Asian, freedom means a lot. So it's important to get every opportunity you can to celebrate that, to, to speak on that, to be educated on that because it's so priceless. It's so fragile, that we see it every day, the fragility in being free and folks just, you know, suffering around this country for the color of their skin. And I just wanted to say that we're going to have entertainment, we're going to have food, we're going to have all types of interactive activities going on. We're going to have a workforce development table, a COVID initiative table, because when we do things, we embrace everybody.
One minute, please.
Known to embrace everybody, but I do want to say... But I do want to say that we may have all come on different ships, but we're here on the same boat now. And that was a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King. And for my Latino brothers and sisters, es posible que todos hayamos venido en embarcación diferentes, pero ahora estamos en el mismo barco. So, please join us, be with us. We love you, we appreciate you, and we respect you. Thank you.
Thank you. Will anyone else like to address the Council? Going once? Going twice?
Good evening, Chelsea City Council. My name is Azaris Montano, and I'm a student at Chelsea High School. Before I start, I know it's too late to ask for this in this budget cycle, but you are asking for a teen center. In the city of Chelsea, the Brown and Clark Middle School have to open their gyms because Chelsea doesn't have a public gym. There is no services or spaces for teens. We want paid internships inside the teen center for youth who want to develop skills in their future. I visited the Brookline Teen Center, and it makes me feel happy because this is a place we need in Chelsea. Thank you, have a great evening.
Buenas noches, everyone, I'm in Chelsea. Nuestros nombres son Eileen y Leslie. Somos estudiantes de Chelsea High School, y estamos aquí para abogar por más financiación para las viviendas asequibles.
Hi, I'm going to translate. Good evening, Chelsea City Council. Our names are Leslie and Eileen, and we are students at Chelsea High School, and we're here to advocate for more funding for affordable housing.
Las familias de Chelsea merecen tener viviendas asequibles o al menos viviendas habitables. Las personas en Chelsea viven con ratas, plagas de insectos, entre tantos otros problemas, y no pueden mudarse a ningún otro lugar en el área porque es demasiado caro.
Chelsea families deserve to have affordable housing and livable housing. The people in Chelsea live with rats, with insect infestations, among other problems, and they can't afford to move anywhere else in the area because it's too expensive.
En la ciudad de Chelsea muchas personas no tienen la necesidad para pagar los alquileres. Proporcionan proporcionar más dinero para más viviendas asequibles reducirá la falta de vivienda, el estrés de las familias y el desplazamiento. La vivienda asequible es atención de salud mental.
In the city of Chelsea, many people don't have the necessary funds to pay their rents. Allocating more money for affordable housing would reduce the lack of housing, the stress on the families, and displacement. Affordable housing is mental health care.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for your time.
So, thank, thank you, just for the youth. We know that some of the youth are here to speak directly towards the budget. That would be following this of the public speaking, but the public speaking is obviously open to you also, but the voice on the budget will be following this right after. Anyone else like to speak directly with public speaking? You want to speak on the budget or public speaking? Towards the budget? Okay. Take to the mode. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Chelsea City Council. My name is Jose Castellón, and I'm a resident of Chelsea, here to advocate for more funding toward mental health services. The reason I am fighting for this issue is because mental health is a big problem in low-income communities like Chelsea, and in most cases, it's overlooked. Sure, people seem fine and look happy and healthy on the outside, but inside, they could be suffering and in pain due to stress and worrying about not being able to pay rent for that month or also having existing health conditions that are not treated due to not going to the hospital because they're scared of the money it will cost or because they are undocumented citizens. On top of not being able to pay for rent and untreated health conditions, Chelsea residents have to deal with overcrowded apartments since the rent is far too high in Chelsea, and people have to live together to just afford a one-family apartment. These problems are only the surface. There are way more problems people deal with on a daily basis. Mental health is typically associated with adults, but youth suffer from it as well. And in some cases, it can be really bad due to generational trauma and other school and family problems. According to nonprofit organization Mental Health America, children whose parents have a mental illness are at risk for developing social, emotional, and/or behavioral problems. An inconsistent and unpredictable family environment, often found in families in which a parent has mental illness, contributes to a child's risk. Other factors that place all children at risk, but particularly increase the vulnerability of children whose parents have mental illnesses include poverty, occupational, and/or marital difficulties, openly aggressive or hostile behavior by a parent, and parent substance abuse. Mental health should not be overlooked. Instead, it should be taken seriously, and this could be done by increasing the funding for mental health services in our city and schools. Thank you for listening, and have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Public speaking? Public speaking going once? Public speaking going twice? Okay. Next agenda on the item.
You have the public hearing on the FY 2023 city budget.
Thank you, youth, thank you.
Anyone want to speak on the budget?
Anyone would like to speak on the budget? You have an opportunity to speak on the FY 23 budget, which will be taken up tonight. So, if you'd like to speak on the budget, please, again, come to the podium, speak your name and your address, please. Thank you. Just want to give you, Mr. Manager, just want to give you a few moments, just the noise of die down. Thank you all for coming. Okay, Mr. Manager.
So, thank you, Mr. President. I am City Manager Tom Ambrosino. I'm here to speak in favor of my FY 23 budget proposal that was submitted to the Council back at the end of April. I'm advocating for the Council to support the entire budget, including the thirteen new positions that I proposed, all of which I think are essential in order for the city to continue to provide the level of service that our residents need and deserve. I will say that I did take, I have heard clearly from the Council that there are certain departments for which the Council would like me to consider even additional positions, ISD, City Clerk, DPW. I have committed to the Council that I will carefully add those departments over the course of the FY 23 year, and will take appropriate steps to address the concerns raised by the Council. I will say that I'm advocating for support of this full budget because there is no financial reason for us to be reducing this budget. This budget is fully supported by anticipated revenues in FY 23. It is, in fact, the first budget that I've presented in my seven years here as City Manager that does not rely at all on the use of any reserves. This budget is balanced and fully funded with anticipated FY 23 revenues. So, I respectfully ask that you support it in full. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Anyone else like to speak on the FY 23 budget? No one else like to speak? Going once on the budget? Going twice? We're going to close. We close that portion of the meeting.
We have the approval of the minutes of regular meeting, May 23rd, 2022.
And under suspension if there are no objections.
I'm sorry, Counselor DiMali, can you speak in your mic?
I meant to adopt unanimously under suspension if there are no objections.
Thank you, Counselor. So moved to adopt.
We have communication from the City Manager. First communication from the City Manager, Market Basket update. I'm writing in response to the recent City Council order requesting an update on the status of the liquor license for the Market Basket parcel. In February 2022, the License Commission approved an all-alcohol beverage package store license for a Market Basket. The ABCCC approved the license in March. Market Basket represented to the License Commission that it would utilize a license in a new building attached to the existing supermarket with a separate entrance and no direct access from the supermarket. According to the ISD, Market Basket has not yet submitted any application for a building permit for this new separate building.
What's the wish of the Council?
And then, request to be notified when they do apply for their building permit or license.
Okay, Counselor, you're the maker of the motion. Would you like to speak, other than what you said?
No, that's it. You accept and file?
Accept and file. Nothing else? Communication?
Nothing else? I missed what you said.
Next order, Mr.?
Next order is a communication from the City Manager. Council order on special permits and variances. Dear Council, in response to the City Council order, I have attached a report showing the list of all special permits and variances granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals in 2017.
What's the?
I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, Counselor Cooperall, you're the maker. You got the floor.
I asked the City Manager to give me this on all the special permits that was issued from, but this wasn't exactly what I asked for. I asked, it is what I asked for, but not exactly what I asked for. What I want to know is the people that are applying for these, not just the ones, because when you go downstairs and you want a special variance to apply for anything they give you, you have to put your name or corporation, whatever it is, and this does not supply me with that. This only tells me when the things were done and what was a variance, but it doesn't say who applied for it. So, I'm requesting that I get one where who actually is applying for these special permits. Thank you.
All right, Counselor, I spoke to the manager on this, and-
I did, too.
It seems like he fulfilled your request, but you want to maybe make an amendment or speak to him directly and put a new order in to get follow-up information?
So, do you want me to speak directly to him?
No, 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 just say if you-
We submit another order requesting what you really want.
Yes.
Submit another request?
For exactly defined.
Okay.
Yep, but he gave you what he thought you were asking for.
All right. We'll submit another.
Next communication from the City Manager, appointments to boards and commissions. Pursuant to Section 42 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I recommend a following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. Reappointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board for a two-year term expiring on June 30th, Terry Widener, Captain's Road, Chelsea. Jared DeYoung, 165 Wonacumber Street. Michelle Diaz, 163 Pearl Street. And Deputy City Manager Ned Kiefer, Boston. For a new appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, Crystal Corilio-Gambrillo, 38 Bellingham Street, for a two-year term expiring on June 30th, 2024. For appointment to the Board of Lobby Trustees, Ms. Grace Lee, Cottin Street. For reappointment to the Cultural Council, Mr. Daqueya, Christmas, 67 Cook Ave. For reappointment to the Community Preservation Act Committee as the Planning Board Representative, Ms. Mimi Rancantore. For reappointment to the Community Preservation Act Committee as the Chelsea Housing Authority Representative, Mr. Juan Vega. For reappointment to the Community Preservation Act Committee, Mr. Yara Noah, Washburn Street. For appointment to the Chelsea Tree Board, Mr. David Vences, 62 Beacon Street. For appointment as the new tree warden as a member of the Chelsea Tree Board Housing and Community Development Senior Project Manager, Hillary Dimino. For reappointment to Chelsea Disability Commission's, Mr. Fidel Martez. For reappointment to the Human Rights Commission, Ms. Adele Slutshower. For appointment?
She wants to waive the rest of the reading.
There's only two more appointments. Okay.
Yeah.
Move to second reading?
Thank you.
Can we just hear the name of the last person? Because we've read the whole thing. We might as well just read the last name, the name.
For appointment to the Youth Commission, Ms. Daniela Maldonado. And for reappointment to the Human Rights Commission, Ms. Adele Slutshower.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, though.
Okay, refer to second reading. Okay. Next, communication from the City Manager, FY 23 budget order. Dear Council, attached, you'll find the proposed orders for the FY 23 budget prepared by Auditor Ed Dunn.
Except the file, I'd ask the move the budget from unfinished business.
So, you're asking to take the budget out of unfinished business, Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Okay. No objection? Okay. Mr. Clerk, if you can remove the budget?
The budget is now removed from the Subcommittee on Conference, and unfinished business is properly before you. By rule, we ask for any verbal orders to be written, written out as amendments, and I have one introduced by, presented tonight, introduced by Counselors Tenebri Garcia, Noriel DeJesus, and Counselor Melinda Vega-Maldonado. It says that an amendment to the General Order that the Department Number 470 DPW structures and ground salaries category be reduced by $15,669.68 from $354,635 to $338,965.
Mr. Clerk?
That's what was given to me.
Yeah, she just gave me the-
You got a new figure? Which figure do you want?
So, can we have a recess? We're going to have to recess for five minutes to find out. Do any of the Council members have any of these? Okay, we need to have a recess. You have two orders we're not aware of. Amendments, orders of amendments to the Council. We're not aware of them. We don't have them. It's three? Yeah, you can't give them to us as we're reading.
... We took the budget out of unfinished business. We're asking for a motion. We asked for a motion...
To adopt by vocal.
To act on the budget, and then we're gonna have each amendment, we have to go one by one. Is that right, Mr. Clerk?
And then it'll be acted upon individually.
So it'll be acted on individually. So what's the motion for the acceptance of?
Councilor Robinson moves to adopt the budget as submitted. And now we're opening it up to amendments.
Amendments. Okay, everyone got a copy?
First amendment introduced by Councilor Tenere Garcia. Councilor, I'm a native, but he's not here to sign it, but she signed and introduced it. Order that would reduce the amount of department number four-seventy DPW structure and grounds salaries category to be reduced by ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars from three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars to two hundred and fifty-five thousand point zero zero seven. A motion?
What's the motion?
Vocal.
Oh, can I speak?
Watch explain it.
Yeah.
Okay.
She wants to speak on it.
I'm just gonna give you a few of the reasons. So this salary amount is far superior in pay than similar supervisory positions in other divisions of DPW with many more employees overseeing and manage. I think this scenario will lead to bad moral and resentment between other DPW employees and management. I also think this sets us up for having to make huge adjustments in salary as a result of this move in the future. This position has a pay scale similar to previous two deputy DPW commissioners, yet does not have the same educational or work experience background requirement. The attached job description and resume of the person chosen does not show the engineering background, nor tradesman experience as a master carpenter, master plumber, or master electrician that one would expect of this pay scale and required to supervise this division and manage employees during the work in any of those three fields. Even a journeyman status should be a minimum requirement for this position, in my opinion. The city council has for some time heard complaints about the status of our parks and recreational areas, despite spending over three hundred thousand in private contracts to third-party vendors. The complaints on conditions of those parks and recreation areas have not decreased. This position does nothing to address those complaints or improve the situation. Begs the question, why are we adding a management position in the DPW B and G division rather than cut those contracts and add Parks and Recreation Division as lobbied by the city council? If there was an increase in staffing in the DPW division, which I would have supported, it should be, in my opinion, by the hiring of tradesmen such as electricians, carpenters, and plumbers. In our last adopted CIP, there is over two million dollars being spent for remodeling several offices at City Hall expansion into attic space and renovation of nine-one-one call center. All of that work is going to outside contractors.
One minute, Councilor.
I'm all set.
Oh, okay. Any one else like to speak?
Thank you.
Councilor DeWol.
First and foremost, I just want to disclose that my husband works for DPW. He doesn't work for this particular department, and so I feel that I can speak on this without any reservation or concern for conflict. I would like to, before I make my comments, I would love to hear from the city manager as to, for him to address the concerns that were just read from my sister counselor, because I'm trying to understand why he feels he needs this position that we're trying to slash. No, I'm not recusing myself, no.
So are you finished with your comments?
Well, yeah, to the chair, I'd like to ask the city manager the questions. I would like for him to respond to the comments that were made as to why this position is needed, why it's budgeted, and why we're trying to slash it. I'm just trying to get a justification.
We've actually had the meetings. I know it's, it's an amendment. It's self-explanatory. What do you need?
It's not me. It's that I represent a constituency of forty thousand people that are concerned of some of the happenings that are happening at City Hall. And so for transparency, I would love the city manager to address some of those concerns, because we're bringing, we're saying, we don't think we should have this budget. We think that it's unnecessary. So I would like to hear from the city manager, who actually put this into the budget, as to why he thinks that he needs it.
City manager, any objections? I mean, it was clear the city manager's position prior to his speaking, so we've heard his position.
Clear to you, perhaps?
So, first of all, this is not a new position in the budget. This is not one of the thirteen new positions I put in the budget. We have an existing position in DPW called Capital Projects Manager that had been vacant for a long time with the departure of Bert Taverna. The focus of that position was on external capital projects. We did not have a need for that. Our need was internal building capital projects. So with upper money, we are funding a three million dollar renovation of the E nine-one-one building. We are about to design and start funding a probably three million dollar renovation of this attic here in City Hall. We have lots of money in our capital budget for City Hall office improvements. What we needed in a capital project manager was someone who was more focused on building vertical construction as opposed to horizontal construction. So we slightly revised the Bert Taverna position to include a capital projects manager slash building and ground superintendent. That was the position in the union contract. It does have a slightly higher pay scale under the union contract than just a pure capital project, but that was our need. So this is not a new position. This position was funded in the FY twenty-two budget. It was unfilled since December. We have filled it. So I really would advocate against this cut, because it will mean, we're not going to lay off someone who was just hired. It will just create a lot of difficulty for me, because I'll have a hundred thousand dollars less in salary, and it'll require me to scramble throughout the course of the year. It will mean I won't be able to fill other positions. I'll have to leave them vacant and that are budgeted, because I'll have to make up for the loss of this money. I'm not gonna lay off an existing employee. That makes no sense. I've made this comment to the council. We're self-insured as a unemployment entity. So we basically, if someone gets laid off, we're paying them, you know, two-thirds of their salary to sit at home. So we're saving a third of a salary whenever we lay someone off. So this is a filled position. It was budgeted this year. That's why it was filled. So I would advocate again, this really is a huge need for us to have someone overseeing the significant amount of building construction we are doing. E nine-one-one is a perfect example, but as I said, we will be advancing design that you funded in the budget for the attic, and we have other office improvements we're looking to do in City Hall and some other public buildings. So this is a real need for the city. It's why we spent some time waiting to fill the job and didn't immediately fill it upon the departure of the previous occupant.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Okay, so I got some folks, some council members that want a question. One question?
I want to ask the city manager a question.
One question?
Okay, one question. The question is a simple one. So if we, even if we don't want this, the position is filled, so it wouldn't make a difference if we say we don't want it, because the position is filled. So you're not gonna take that off. So in other words, let me explain to these how this works, simple way. You're not gonna take this position, this person that's already hired, away. You're gonna find a way to take the money from somewhere else. So in return, this really doesn't do anything. What it does is, it just shuffles money, but the position is still there, right? Let me understand. Is that correctly what it is?
When the council cuts salary from someone who currently works for the city, we typically don't lay that person off. That would make no financial sense. We'd be paying two-thirds of their salary for them to sit at home. So instead, we basically try to figure out how to make it work. That's different than cutting a salary for a new position that I'm requesting that we haven't filled yet. This is not one of those new positions.
This is a position that existed with a demand.
That's it, Councilor. That's it.
Okay, I got my answer.
City Manager, thank you for the explanation. I completely understand that this is something that is necessary, but I do agree with my sister councilwoman in the morale point of being able to look within the DPW department. And is there any opportunity to do that? And also, is this a union position, and what are constraints within that?
Yes, so before I directly answer that, let me, I recognize that the council has asked for more attention to parks. As I explained at the hearings, I am looking carefully at that, but I wanted to give the new director time to evaluate that situation before I simply propose something. I may be proposing something to the council on that mid-year, but I need to give the director a chance to review that situation. To specifically answer your question, this is a union position. It falls within a union scale. So as soon as we made the decision that we needed to move the focus from outside to inside, there was a union position that encompassed that work. It was called in the union contract, Building and Ground Superintendent slash Capital Projects Manager. It has a specific salary range attached to it, and we are required to abide by that. Yes, it is indeed a little higher than some of the other salaries, but it's a requirement of the union contract. I will also say that when we post union positions, we are required by the contract, and we follow this to the letter here. We post it to the union first, and union employees, steel workers specifically, have first opportunity to apply before anyone else. No existing steelworker applied for this job. Only after they had that exclusive opportunity for a full week to apply are we entitled to go out to the world and advertise the job, and that's what we did here. And we ended up actually finding a Chelsea resident for this position.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Anyone else have a question that has not spoken? I know Councilor Taylor has one.
A question for the city manager, but I would like to speak on the amendment.
Okay, so we're gonna speak on amendment. We're just gonna clarify the city manager, since he's here. If you have any other one for the city manager?
Tell the city manager over this. And my concern was if the salary started at seventy-six, why didn't we go to the ninety-nine as opposed to starting out on the seventy-six?
That is a fair question, but I will tell you that we have typically brought people in in serious, important positions at the higher end of the pay scale. We had done that in the last handful of department hires that I did. We did it with the HR Director. We did it with the Chief of Assessing. We typically, when we have important positions that require good skills, it has been a tough job market out there, so we typically are bringing people in at close to the top or the top of the pay scale. I just don't think we could have found a qualified person to do this job at the lower end of that pay scale.
That was my question.
Councilor Garcia, directly question to the manager? Okay, no, we just, no. We're gonna get sort of, we're still open for the budget, the amendment, but we had questions for the city manager. Just want to sit him down and finish my... Well, no more questions. We're closing that. Okay, that's closed. Okay, so I'll recognize Todd Taylor first, because he has a question. Yes, ma'am?
Ask him questions. I still have not made my comments, so I just want to...
I understand. That was a question. This is where we go back and you get a chance to make a comment.
Yeah, I'm saying that I had told you that I wanted to make comments. I just wanted to remind you that I'm on the waiting list.
I'm aware, I'm aware, Councilor. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor?
So I think that it's important to understand that the city manager has a serious job to do. Since I've been on this council, every budget that has been proposed has been a reasonable budget, and seen as a... And seen as I'm probably the most conservative person on this council, I, I understand that saving money is always a great thing, but not at the expense of getting the job done properly. That is the reason for the city manager to present his budget so that he can have the tools to do the jobs properly. He explained that the new DPW director needed time to kind of get things in order and to, and to try to put together the department in a way that works more efficiently. I don't, while it is within the power of this body to reduce the budget, I don't think that this is a prudent thing to do. I, I don't typically like to micromanage the city manager on things that, you know, we're all not particularly as well-versed as he is on these matters. Now, I have talked to several people involved here and it's my, it's my opinion that we need to support this budget in full. I don't think that this is an excessive budget. This budget gives the tools that we need to do to get the job done. We've, we've all complained about the parks. So what's the solution? You want to take money away from the department that does the parks? It doesn't make any sense. The, the position will stay intact and they're gonna have to scramble from other places to, to, to fill this. Cutting the budget here makes absolutely no sense in this case, so I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garcia, then Counselor Devo will speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep my remarks specifically on the amendment present, but I will say this. Very high level, the challenges that our community faces are vast. We heard it today during the public speaking portion of the budget. We've heard our youth talk about the importance of investing in strategic ways to really address the needs of this community. Sticking to the amendment in place right now, listen, I am in support of any union job that is created that provides a living wage. I am more in support if we're providing jobs to our Chelsea residents. So I am glad to see that not often do we have opportunities where we don't hand off residency waivers like candy for this specific situation. I'm glad that this is a union job that is staying within our community. However, I will say that I continue to point this out and I'm going to say this again. Women are not being paid at the same level. And I looked at the budget and I saw that plenty of department heads who happen to be female, a lot of the supervisory positions of women who happen to be female are also union members and they're not being classified in a way and at a salary range that starts anywhere near the benefits of this salary. So I will continue to point that out because that is an inequity that continues to persist. And I won't ta, toss this bone to the city manager because I know that he doesn't create the classifications for, for the certain department heads, but I find it quite curious and interesting that department heads, female department heads-
One minute.
-women who are union members and have supervisory roles are not getting this sort of salary. So pointing that out again, again, I will never vote against a union job, especially a job that is in support of continuing to keep our residents here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vido.
So I will be voting against this for so many reasons. I sat here through the budget and I heard over and over us realizing just how short-staffed we are in so many different departments. We had people come here and talk about there being code violations and how we needed more housing inspectors. We can't think that we're going to continue to develop in the city, bring people into the city and that we don't have to beef up our staff in order to keep up with the Joneses and keep up with what we've, what we've allowed to move into our city. It is crazy to me that there was no mention of anything when we were gonna hire four additional four police officers just for fun, but that we want to cut off at the department that is literally responsible for creating the space we need at City Hall so we can render the services that we should be doing at City Hall. This to me is backwards. A lot of it is regurgitated from our city council president who is not here. I'm concerned of emails that are going out and the, and the potential of open meeting laws. This is, this to me smells of politics and it is disgusting. I have been back just a couple of months and I've tried to really keep my nose clean and try to do my job here, but this smells of politics and it doesn't smell good and I'm extremely disappointed at this. I will be voting absolutely against it. And the reason why I didn't recuse myself for the DPW budget was because if no one else wants to follow rules, then why should I?
Counselor, if you want, you can-
Everybody said what I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
If you want, you can clarify what you mean about open meetings.
Because my husband doesn't work for this department. I usually recuse myself from the entire DPW budget, but because he doesn't work for this particular department, I feel I can take a vote and be impartial. But I, I continue to see funny politics and funny things happening and I just don't think it's okay. I think our community deserves better and we should be investing, investing and trying to figure out how we better the services for our community instead of playing politics.
Counselor, I'm just asking if you want to clarify yourself about open meetings. You said something that-
Yes, there was an email that was circulating to city councilors about this exact matter, about how we need to rally around and get, cut this part, and conversations are happening outside of these chambers, which I know, I've learned is illegal. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, well, no one should be doing that.
One thousand percent. That's what I said.
Okay. Next speaker. Anyone else likes to speak? Well, he had a question. He didn't, he didn't speak on the amendment. He spoke on the question. So you have the floor, Counselor Vercupo. Yeah.
From what I get, all these things here that are here, it really doesn't make a difference to the people outside to understand. The budget will still be done. If you cut, whatever you cut or you don't cut, the budget has already been done. You gotta do this stuff before the budget comes to the city manager. You can only line cut. You can cut certain parts. And what happens when you cut, it's gonna, like he said earlier, the, the city manager said it, the budget, you cannot fire someone that's there already. So I'll be voting to keep this because what's the point of voting not to have it when it's still gonna be there?
Okay.
You, you know, it's, this is just for the public outside. We can, all this has to be done before it comes to the budget, before we vote on it. You can amend anything, but what happens is the money gets taken from somewhere else.
That's not true, Counselor. That's not, if you're directing a public, that's not true. You can make amendments.
Right, but the money's gonna get taken from somewhere else. That's what I'm saying. You can amend anything, but what happens is the money gets moved from one to the other. If the position is already created, like he stated, he's not gonna fire anybody.
Counselor, directly on your question so we can move on?
No more questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone? Counselor Robinson.
There are consequences to this if we do cut. We're looking at, looking over here to save money, but on the other hand, we're gonna have to lay these people off. We're still gonna have to pay their unemployment benefits. So you add up what we're cutting and what it's gonna cost us to pay for unemployment. To me, it doesn't make a lot of sense. So therefore, I, I can't support the amendment, even though I had questions around that we should have started at seventy-six thousand as opposed to the higher end, but I will support the budget.
No other speakers? We'll move on for the roll call on the First Amendment.
Yes would be to adopt the amendment and no would be to deny the amendment. Counselor Vercupo? Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Taylor?
No.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Everdoneta absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
No.
Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Yes. One, two, three, four, five in favor. One, two, three, four. So absent, the amendment is adopted. Oh, no. Five, no, we need six. You need six votes to adopt it. Yeah.
Mr. Clark, can you reread the order and redefine the vote again so we can take a second vote?
The order is that, order that would reduce the amount the department for seventy DPW structures and grounds salaries category to be reduced by ninety-nine thousand, six-hundred-twenty-eight dollars from three-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, six-hundred-thirty-five dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, double oh seven.
Okay. Can you define what a yes vote would mean?
A yes vote would be to cut.
And a no vote?
Would be to leave it the way it was.
Okay. I don't think they got the, I don't think they understood.
Want me to do another roll call?
Yeah, I don't think they understood. A yes, they cut it.
We're voting again?
He didn't, he said it was a mixture on explanation.
Did every-
What's the clarification?
The clarification was whether or not the entire thing would be cut or not, or reduced.
At this point, would you explain what the vote is?
You want to do the new roll call?
No, I just want you to explain the vote, where we are now.
Where we are now is five in favor, four opposed, two absent. It's, it's adopted.
Okay. I thought you needed six.
You need six if you had the full body.
I thought you-
You don't have the full body here.
Okay. I'm, I'm not under that impression, but.
You want to get a clarification, get a clarification.
We can move on.
No, I, I mean, you got some more to do, you know. Call recess.
That's why. Can I call a three-minute recess and have a meeting with the city manager? She's not here.
Counselor, thirty seconds.
Okay, Mr. Chair, let's move on. First.
Amendment number two offered. Amendment number two offered by Counselor Tenere Garcia and Arias DeJesus and Melinda Vega Maldonado ordered that the department, number six thirty, Recreation and Cultural Affairs salaries category be reduced by forty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars from two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five to two-hundred-and-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two.
What's the, what of the council?
I want to make a motion to withdraw.
Withdraw?
Withdraw that one, too.
Move on to the next amendment.
I want to make a motion to withdraw.
You already did.
The previous one, but I want to make a statement.
The one we voted on?
Yes. Is that possible?
I don't know. It's already been.
No.
It's not about changing your vote. The question is that she wants to withdraw the motion. She wants to redraw, if you don't understand the motion, she wants to redraw the whole order that validates the vote, which-
Any objections from the floor?
Any, any obje, I'm sorry?
So then there's nothing before us?
No, on the one we just voted on.
Exactly.
If there's no objections.
If there's no objection- If there's no objection, the, no objection, the last vote.
You want to withdraw the amendment that you offered that we just roll called?
Yes.
Are there any objections from any counselors? To you.
Okay. Well, of the council.
Can somebody tell me what's happening?
That vote that you were.
I'll explain. You want me to explain?
No, I would rather.
Well, Paul, you, you're the senior person. You.
The amendment was offered, you voted on it, it was adopted five, four, two. Now, as a result of that, I guess she had second thoughts, started over, and would like to withdraw the amendment with your permission.
That we already, that we just adopted.
That we just adopted with your permission. If there's no objections, then the chair will allow her to do it.
No, there's no objections. No objections.
Okay.
Is that all four amendments, or?
Do you want to continue on with any more amendments? You want to take them all out?
Yes.
Yes, I'm going to take them all out, but.
Okay. Okay, so we can just clarify.
Sorry, but I do want to speak on it.
Go ahead. They're not before. They were verbal anyway.
Okay, you can speak.
Um, I, I want to clarify things. I don't want to interfere with anyone's job or obviously the, the work that, that is to be done. Obviously, there's a ton of projects. The city's growing. We definitely need this. I just didn't understand the morale of it. Um, I don't understand why the huge amount of money for this position when I think that others in DPW deserved probably the position. This, and honestly, I think that, I'm sorry, but Counselor Vido, you should have been recused from this. I, I don't speak on anything about the police, so I won't mention anything, but I definitely think that you should have been recused. I don't want to jeopardize any union jobs. I definitely support all unions. I think that we need to concentrate more on parks and our city needs to be beautified and our youth need to be priority. And that's, that's it.
Thank you.
I'll keep it clean.
No, I, the chair wants to move forward. We don't want to have cross conversation. Yeah, unfortunate chair.
Mr. Chairman?
You can, you could challenge the chair if you want, but I'm saying no.
You give someone a little power. Look at that. Unbelievable. I would like to challenge the chair. Even if I lose, it's worth it. I'm tired of these shenanigans.
Challenge the chair because her name was mentioned. She wants to get into a cross conversation. We can have a vote on it. If the chair stands correct, we move on and we don't get into personal attacks.
So what did you do? What was your ruling?
Can you clarify the vote?
The vote will stand with the chair that we move on instead of allowing counselors members to go back and forth. There was something, there was a council member name that was said that was out.
And an out.
Correct, correct. Counselor, but you're a senior member. You're aware that these things happen and they shouldn't happen, but we need to move on.
Of course. I'm going to move on. I'm happy. I'm good.
Okay. There's no. So we're just trying to mediate everything. So if you want to challenge the chair to say that I'm wrong.
Challenge the chair. Let's just take a vote. If you say no, that's cool.
Okay, I say no.
But let's, we don't need the whole sermon.
Okay, a yes vote would be to uphold the chair's decision to move on and no vote would be to allow Counselor Devo to respond.
Correct.
Uh, Counselor Recupero?
No.
No. Counselor Teneri Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
No. Counselor Taylor?
No.
No. Counselor Lopez absent. Uh, Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Arizona absent. Counselor Brown?
No.
No.
Wait.
I mean.
It's a.
No, I'm saying no. I don't want her to speak.
Yes, the bad.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
What a shit show.
Counselor Vido?
No.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five in favor. One, two, three, four.
On whether or not I could defend myself and the collaborative wins.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. We move on. No, Counselor, Counselor, we're going on to the second order.
No, the original motion.
Original order, which is the budget.
Counselor Robinson to adopt the general budget. We have three votes on the budget. A yes would be to adopt the general budget, a no would be to deny. Counselor Recupero?
I'm, I'm, counselors, counselors, if you want to do your job, your responsibility, one of the biggest responsibilities we have as city counselors is to pass a budget. We are the mediators between our constituents and City Hall to provide service.
Then, Mr. Chair, you should not be speaking from the chair. We should be voting.
Not to get up, Madam Counselor. So we are voting. That's the point I'm making. We are voting.
Okay, point proved. Let's go.
Thank you.
You have the original motion from Counselor Robinson to adopt the general budget. We have three separate, uh, votes coming up. Yes, they require that the Department of Revenue, not me. Counselor Recupero?
What are we voting on? The whole budget or separate vote?
Right now, the entire budget.
The entire budget?
And then it's broken down for the Department of Revenue.
Yes, yes, yes. I vote yes for the entire budget.
Counselor Teneri Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Arizona absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
And Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. The motion is adopted. On the next part of the budget, Water Enterprise. That's your breakdown. This is. A yes vote would be to accept the Water Enterprise.
Just a moment.
You're going to excuse, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Recused, okay. Yes.
Yeah.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Teneri Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Arizona absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido recused and Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
And Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, none opposed, two absent, one recused. We have the Sewer Enterprise Fund before us, fourteen million, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars. Motion to adopt, uh, Counselor Robinson? Okay, motion by Counselor Robinson to approve. Counselor Recupero?
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Teneri Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Arizona absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido absent. Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
And Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor and none opposed, three absent. Motion adopted. That's it on the budget. The FY twenty-three budget has been adopted. We'll go back to the regular order of business and the communication received, a year-end financial request, salary deficits funded by salary reserve transfers, two hundred eight thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. Other deficits funded by free cash, seven hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars. Reauthorization of revolving funds, no funding required. Donations, no funding required. That's the communication from Tom. It's pretty lengthy. It's about twenty-four pages, but it's all got to do with the financial orders that have to be paid prior to July first.
Mr. Will on the council?
Accept and file the communication. Something will be coming up on the new business.
Okay. Uh, we have the communication from Communications and Petitions. Copy of communication received from the Park and Collecting Net Center on White beginning approved actions taken at Traffic and Parking Commission meeting, March first, twenty twenty-two.
What's the will of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
So accept it and file under suspension. Next order, please.
Next order, we go on to second readings. Uh, no, unfinished business. Those were the budgets. Okay, so we're all set on unfinished business. We're moving on to second readings now.
Hold on. We, yes, we got the bottom. He forgot.
Missed one? One might be. Which one, Leo? Which one?
The body cameras. That's the police body cameras.
Okay, they're stuck together. Okay. Approval of the five-year contract for the body-worn cameras. I'm writing with a request that the City Council approve up to five-year contract for the new body-worn camera system. As you may recall, uh, recall, the City Council recently approved funding for body-worn cameras for the Chelsea Police Department. We are now in the process of procuring these cameras. However, because the setup and training on these cameras for the entire force will be a time-consuming process, the Police Department has recommended that we seek a five-year commitment from the selected camera vendor rather than the typical three-year contract. I concur with this approach. However, pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty B and twelve, any contract exceeding three years must be approved by majority vote of the City Council. For the above reasons, I respectfully request and ask the City Council authorize a five-year contract for the body cameras.
What's the will of the council?
Accept and file a communication. Something will be coming up on the new business.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Counselor.
Okay.
Robinson?
Okay, now we can move on to, uh, second readings. Unfinished business has been, uh, ex, taken care of. We voted on all of those. First order under second readings, order that pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Section forty-four, Section fifty-three F and three quarters, the City Council approved the FY twenty-three PEG access budget as follows. Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars for Chelsea Cable Television, ninety-five thousand dollars for Chelsea Public Schools, and a hundred and thirty thousand for the City of Chelsea.
What's the will of the council?
I'll ask a roll call. Vote on the adoption.
Okay. Mr. Clark, can you call a roll call, please?
Yes. Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Teneri Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Arizona absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Counselor de Jesus? Absent. And Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor and none opposed, three absent. Motion is adopted. The.
Thank you. Motion adopted.
Right next order under second readings.
Community preservation.
Appropriation. Appropriate the FY twenty-twenty-three Community Preservation Committee operating budget. Ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars estimated revenues for acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space. Ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, ten percent of estimated revenues for the acquisition, preservation, rehabilita, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources. Ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars of the estimated revenues for acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing. Six hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, sixty-five percent of estimated revenues to the budgeted reserve. And appropriate from FY twenty-twenty-three estimated revenues, forty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, five percent of estimated revenues for the CPC administrative expenses.
What's the will of the council? Okay, we need, okay.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Teneri Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez absent. Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Arizona absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
And Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. The motion is adopted. That's all you have on second readings. We'll move on now to new business. First order under new business, order introduced by Counselor de Jesus, order that Traffic and Parking Commission look into and make recommendations about traffic safety measures due to speeding on Crescent Avenue between Broadway and Eastern Avenue.
What's the motion maker? What's your motion? Okay, accept the communication under suspension. Do you have the floor? Would you like to speak on it? Need you to sign it, please.
No, thank you.
No, okay. The next order introduced by Counselor Recupero, order that Traffic and Parking Commission look into permits for the children of residents who are sixty-five years and older who require care.
Like to adopt under suspension if there are no objections. I'd like to speak on it.
Thank you, Counselor. You have the floor. You have the floor.
This is, uh, sort of like, uh, a program they have for caretakers. A lot of people take care of their mother and father. They are caretakers to them. But yet, they, they can't, lots of times, they can't go to their house. They can't find a place to park, or they live out of the city, so they have to get all kinds of, they have to get a resident parking permit. They have to do all kinds of stuff to go visit their parents and take care of them. We already have a program sort of like that. It's called the Caretakers Program, which you can live outside the city. You could come in and you take care of people. You don't have to worry about parking. So this will be sort of, I'm asking the Parking Commission, sort of to give them the same opportunity to go visit their parents and don't have to worry about, even if they go on the weekend, they can't get a visitors pass. So this is what I'm asking, for them to consider giving them the same kind of privilege they give caretakers, because sometime the children of older people are caretakers of their parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order, please, Mr. Clark.
Order introduced by Counselor Recupero, order that the City Manager look into, to consider offering paid leave time to employees seeking maternity and paternity leave.
I'd like to adopt under suspension if there's no objection. I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, Mr.
No. Just City Manager, and I would like to ask the City Manager what he thinks about it.
Okay, you got the floor. You can speak on it, or do you want to move it to conference and have a meeting?
No, I, I don't want to move it to conference.
You speak on it. You can't ask the City Manager. I mean, you can.
Okay.
To respond.
I'd like to adopt under suspension if there's no objections.
You can.
Okay.
Go ahead and speak.
Okay. This is a program where women will be entitled to get paid maternity leave. I don't, you know, a lot of places do not offer women paid maternity leave. And, uh, when we offer, I wish, I hope that the city treats women, especially the ones that are having babies, because without them, there wouldn't be none of us. So it's a, a, a way to help them in their time of need. And the money will come from them themselves, because this program will, the, the, the people would have to pay. The employees will pay. I mean, there is. And it's a good thing to give women the opportunity to take care of their children and not to worry how to make ends meet or how to worry about how to get money to help them. So I hope, I would like to the chair to ask the City Manager what he thinks of this program, uh, how it would be, if it's the, if it's possible for the City Manager to come and explain a little what he thinks of this.
Not tonight, Counselor. I mean, that's something, no, that's.
Okay. But it's up to the City Manager anyways. He's the one that's going to determine it.
Right, but we just can't honestly have this kind of conversation. It's out of order.
I just wanted to ask him what he thinks. What is the feasibility of implementing a program like this?
Not, not, Counselor. You can ask him after the meeting. You can ask him after the meeting. We can't get out of the rules. Trying to keep order.
Okay, I understand. Fine, fine. I let it go. That's fine.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Next order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Counselor Lopez, order that the City Manager look into imposing fines for those who rent parks throughout the city and do not maintain it, and for the City Manager to instruct DPW to put signs on parks that say, "No drinking allowed."
I'd like to adopt under suspension. I'd like to speak on it.
Yes, um, Counselor, you mean no drinking alcohol or just no drinking allowed? You got to be.
I guess no drink would mean alcohol.
Okay, but it can mean water.
I would have to specifically put alcohol on there.
If that's what you mean, I mean.
So let's, we'll amend it to put alcohol.
Thank you, Counselor, you got the floor. Can you amend that, no alcohol, please?
I don't know if anybody heard, but a couple of weeks ago, there was sort of incidents in Highland Park where there was all kinds of drinking, maybe ninety, a hundred cases of beer. And DPW workers were surrounded by them, and they were in fear of their... of their lives. They were in fear, they were being attacked by the people that were there. So, maybe by putting this, saying that there's no drinking alcohol within the parks, it will prevent something like this from happening. Because I don't think anybody that goes there shouldn't have to worry about taking their children inside of a park and being worried that somebody that's been drinking goes up to them and might want to do some harm to them. So, I believe that this is a good thing to put the signs, and at least let the people know that you cannot drink alcohol within the park.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next order, introduced by Council Recupero, ordered that the city manager instruct the police to have more patrolling on the larger parks.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
You got the floor, Counselor.
I know I just said about the incident that happened in Highland Park, but if we allow this to happen in one park, then it would happen to every other big park we have within the city. So it's within the best interest of the city to send a message out to these people that you cannot do this in a park, you cannot go after anybody that's there. Parks are there for the enjoyment and the pleasure of the people that live here, and they should feel safe going inside of a park. They shouldn't have to feel that you're going in the park and someone's going to beat you up because you want to go to the park and at least relax a little. So, from what I understand, the city manager already enacted something like this, where he did get police to go in a... What I understand, and I'm... My understanding is that police are actively going in parks right now, especially in Highland Park. They're there to patrol in the area to make sure that no one gets out of hand. And I commend the city manager for acting in such a quick manner that the people now don't have to worry. You don't have to worry anymore about going to the park, especially on the weekends when there's large events there. The police are going to be watching in the parks, and that's a good thing. So, thank the city manager and thank all of us for instructing the city manager to take care of the parks for the people that are there. So, all of us should be commended for making sure that the parks are safe for the people to go to. Thank you.
The order is not written, I will...
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay. Next order introduced by Council Recupero, Council Lopez. Order that the city manager provide city council with the amount that was spent for Memorial Day by the Veterans Office, and for the city manager to look into allocating more monies if needed.
Adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
You got the floor, Counselor.
On Memorial Day, it's a very important thing. It's important for all the military people that served our nation. And I believe that on... And especially in this Memorial Day, there was no flags. There should have been flags, at least, the people that want to have flags to show their, you know, the appreciation for the service of the people that served our nation and died for this country. So, I want to know, how much money do we spend? If this gentleman, or whoever runs the department, needs more money, you should come to us, and I'm pretty sure that most of us will give them more money to do. And I've got complaints, too, from a lot of people, that in the beginning, there was no water. The water was brought at the end. Water should have been there in the beginning, it shouldn't have been brought at the end of the affair, it should have been there. It was a very hot day at that particular day, and there was no water, the water was brought after. So, I want to address these concerns that maybe they, you know, they should be a little more vigilant to understand and do the right thing. Because on a hot day, how are you going to have no water through the whole thing and bring it at the end? I got people complaining to me about that, and I believe myself that it's kind of unfair. You should have had the water in the beginning, not at the end. That's one address, and you should have had flags. What, if you want a flag, what, you should be able to hear, you want a flag, you should have been able to get it. So if this gen... if the department needs more money, we'll just give them more money. So I just want to know, how much money do they really get for run that event? And how much does it cost to run that event? If he doesn't have enough money to run it the right way, we should all turn around and give him more money to run it the right way. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding the money? There's Council Robinson.
I think if you recall, I asked during the budget, he only had forty-two hundred in there for celebrations, and I had asked him, "How much more money do you need so that we could possibly get a ban or kind of boost up what Memorial Day really stands for?" And he didn't really have any answers. I agree that we should be doing more. Thank you.
Next order?
Next order, please.
Order introduced by Council Taylor. Order that the city manager instruct DPW to paint a crosswalk on Cook Avenue and Washington Avenue, and another crosswalk at the intersection of Garfield Ave. and Washington Ave.
Make of the motion, Council Taylor?
I'd like to adopt under suspension if there's no objections.
No objection, would you like to speak on it?
No.
Okay, next order.
Okay, next order introduced by Council Vito. Order that a subcommittee on conference be scheduled to discuss the creation of a memorial site for victims of violence within the community.
I'd actually like to amend that, I don't want a subcommittee on conference, I just want the city manager to get back to the council as to whether or not that is possible, and I'd like to speak on it.
Can you give the clerk the amendment, how you want it to read, please?
You just want to eliminate subcommittee on conference?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to speak on it, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
You have the floor.
So initially, it started because I was talking to our admin assistant, to Fatima, and another young person that lives in the building, and I was talking about my niece, who everybody knows was murdered last year. And they were talking about people and losses that they experienced while they were in school, because it's not just Sandel, it's Pablo, it's Louis, it's Jimmy, it's so many young people that we've lost. And then, as I thought about it more, I thought, you know, we lost so many people even to just COVID. We have vigils all the time for people who have lost their lives to substance abuse. Charlestown is a city that's the size of this city hall, and they have a little park that they call the Peace Park, where people go to memorialize people that lost their lives to substance abuse. I just think it would be nice if we had a place somewhere in the city that people could go and collectively mourn people that they've lost here. While my niece was born somewhere, she passed away here. I'm hoping it's something that's non-denominational so that it brings more people. But if there's a place that we can find in the city where people could go, maybe put... I don't know, I don't really have any idea, or maybe I have too many ideas. Initially, I thought about victims of violence, because it seems like the only people that get memorialized are firefighters or police officers, and we lose people all the time here. And I just think it would be nice for families to have closure or a place where they could go memorialize their loved ones. So, again, I'm open to conversations, but if the city manager could maybe look into something like that, I think it would be great for the community and for a lot of healing that needs to happen in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Vito. If I can just ask you, so the order should be that the city manager create a memorial site?
Look into the creation?
Yes.
That's where I added you, okay.
Look into a creation, okay, thank you.
Our next order introduced by Council Brown. Order that pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty B and twelve, the Chelsea City Council approves a five-year contract for body worn cameras.
What's the...
If there are no objections?
No objection?
No, roll call.
Roll call, vote on the body camera? Anyone?
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Council Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez absent, Council Vega Maldonado? Yes? Body cameras?
Yes, I mean, yes, but can I...
Oh, you want to recuse yourself?
I'm not...
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay. Council Arizona absent, Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Vito?
Yes.
Council De Jesus?
Yes.
And Council Judy Garcia, absent. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor, none opposed, three absent, and one recused. You have now all the financial orders, you have about twenty...
Council Recupero make an order.
Send them all to second reading. Council Robinson? Send all financial orders to a second reading?
To a second reading.
Wait a minute, any objections on all the communications regarding authorizes of funding for second reading?
These are all second readings, okay.
Thank you.
All set, that's all you have before you.
So, okay, all right.
Any public announcements?
No more business before us, any public announcements? Yes. Yes, Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. My public announcement is a simple one. I like to make sure that all the people of Chelsea know that they're safe to go in the parks. You don't have to worry about being, getting beat up or anything like that. Our city's parks are going to be patrolled from now on, I think. And that will ensure that your children and you will be safe. So, thank you very much for that.
Council De Jesus?
So, my public comment is regarding something that has happened since the last time that we've met. You know, across the nation, we're seeing a lot of gun violence and shootings and concerns with our youth. And since the last time we met, we've had some concerns even in our own community. And I just, I want to share that I will be reaching out and, you know, leaning on my colleagues, on the Police Department, on the School Committee members, to see how we can plan, collaborate, and communicate better on these concerns in our community as a parent, not just as a counselor. This is very concerning to me, and I think that even though schools will be closing, and, you know, us as counselors ourselves will be going on break, these situations with gun violence can happen anywhere. It can happen in our community spaces, in our supermarkets, and so I think that we should all join forces and listen to our community and feed into their opinions on what can be some of these solutions, and also listen in to our experts in the school departments and the police departments to better ensure safety for our kids, our parents, our community as a whole.
Anyone else got an announcement? Council Taylor?
Just like to remind everyone, too, that our, the Chelsea Rotary installation of officers is happening Tuesday, June twenty-first at Anthony's Malden. I would ask anyone interested in supporting a great organization that does a lot of good in this community and internationally, that you would buy a ticket to our installation and support an organization that just does a lot of good in this community, thank you.
Thank you. Council Vito?
You know that next Friday, June seventeenth, Green Roots is having their national, their annual fundraiser, their annual meeting, but it's a fundraiser, because Green Roots, they're being displaced from the Chelsea Creek, and so they're having a fundraiser to find a permanent home. I also wanted to reiterate, I know that we mentioned it earlier, but Juneteenth will be celebrated on Monday, June twentieth, from twelve to four PM at Washington Park.
Okay. So, I just also have a few announcements. I want to first thank the city manager and Mr. Dunn for the great work that you did to provide us this budget this year. I want to thank my colleagues for, under a heated debate tonight, that we almost blew up, but we did not, we kept our cool, our leaders stood up. So I want to thank you for your patience with me tonight. But I think this budget speaks exactly what Council De Jesus talks about, in a sense. There's a lot of opportunity for us to work with the police and the school department to actually deal with some of the most pressing issues that face us here in this city, with youth, with mental illness, and a lot of things that we did not speak of tonight that we spoke in public in the city council meetings, subcommittees on the budget. So, I know it was quite difficult, things coming in at the last moment, things were said, but I want to just say, tonight, I just try to hold us together, and I think you all have done a great job. Sometime, it's easy to get out, but we contained ourselves tonight. So I'm grateful for my counselors at large, for their leadership, and for their dedication, and our new counselors for being here. It gets heated, but we did a good job, and this is what we are asked to do during tonight when it comes to budget. So thank you for your patience with me tonight. It's the first time that I've done this in a long time without having all the preparation with stuff before us tonight. So thank you. If anyone else have any moments of silence, Counselor Vito?
I'd like to have a moment of silence for Ennio Lopez's mother-in-law, Margarita Montinas de Romero, and for the children and the family and the teachers that passed away in the Uvalde school shooting in Texas.
Okay.
And Buffalo, we did Buffalo last time, but...
Council Recupero, you had your answer.
Yes, I'd like to have a moment of silence for my niece Jackie, her old boyfriend got shot and died last week.
Anyone else?
A moment of silence for Jack's uncle's mom who passed away, and also a moment of silence for D-Day. And the reason that we're all here is for those people who lost their lives defending our freedom here, and were able to walk around the way that we walk around today because of the sacrifices that they made.
Yeah, I also want to just publicly say to our colleague, Ennio Lopez, we are with you in prayer and thoughts, our prayers with your family, your extended family. And if anything, this council, I speak for myself, but I hope I speak for members of the council. If we can do anything, just let us know. Thank you all.